Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, Joint Special Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council and the Design Review, Planning, and Transportation Commissions. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N2920 issued on March 17th, 2020, that allows attendance by members of the city council, commissions, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting by video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. I do want to say that we're having audio issues right now on Granicus and YouTube. So right now, the only way that people are able to participate by audio is through Zoom. This doesn't matter so much for the commissioners and council, but would for anybody else watching. We'll update you as that gets corrected. To provide a live remote public comment, join the Zoom Video Conference Meeting. The meeting ID and password are 95502670010, and the passcode is 653475. And I recognize the irony that the only people that can hear that are actually on Zoom at this point. Should you not to provide, choose to provide comments, but would like to view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways when the audio is up: on YouTube Live, on the Walnut Creek's YouTube channel, on cable broadcast Comcast Channel 28 in the Incorporated Walnut Creek area only, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 29, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and livestream on the city's website. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only, and therefore, public comment will be received during the council and commission consideration of the item. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Transportation Commission Jared Ash.
Present.
Jamie Salsito. I see her there. David German.
Present.
Sam Cagle.
Present.
Danny Milk.
Present.
Design Review Commission Charles Krelling.
Here.
Joseph Gorney.
Here.
Brian Killian. Brian, thank you. Casey Case.
Here.
Carlos Vaya. Actually, don't see Carlos on. Planning Commission Ken Strongman.
Here.
Melissa Ward.
Here.
Brent Anderson.
Here.
Bob Pickett.
Here.
Peter Leesack.
Here.
Steve Reiser.
Here.
And Brian Chriselik.
Here.
And from the City Council, Councilmember Darling.
Here.
Councilmember Haskew.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Francois.
Here.
Mayor Wilk.
Here. All right, well, we have a quorum and then some, four quirms. Next on the agenda is an item titled "Study Session to Review Application Number Y21025", submitted by Toyota Walnut Creek for amendments to the General Plan North Downtown Specific Plan and the ASCM zoning to create the ASCM Mixed Use Special District to increase FAR and authorize multifamily residential hotel and other compatible non-residential uses in the auto sales custom manufacturing ASCM General Plan and North Downtown Specific Plan land use designations. This evening's session is a workshop to introduce the proposal to the commissions present in order to build a shared understanding of the concepts proposed by the applicant, as well as receive the questions and input from the commissions on issues of importance to the commission. After the presentations, there will be a 20-minute segment for clarifying questions by council and commissioners. That's in total, by the way, more on that. Time for public comment. A 25-minute segment for comments by commissioners and one for council comments. Staff will be taking notes throughout and listening for comments, questions, and themes that may need to be addressed before the application comes before each commission. We have the benefit of members of Transportation Commission, Design Review Commission, and the Planning Commission present this evening. We'll be trying to cover quite a lot of ground this evening. It'd be very helpful if you'd focus your questions and comments on your commission's area of expertise only. Specifically, we'll be looking to transportation to comment on circulation and connectivity, design review to comment on aesthetics and design considerations for a mixed-use land use of the type proposed, and the Planning Commission to comment on the broader land uses and development regulations for the mixed-use land uses proposed. And at this time, I invite staff to provide the staff and applicant presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wilk, council members and commissioners. I'm Mark Wardlaw, Community Development Director with the City of Walnut Creek. I'm here today with Terry Kilgore, our Assistant City Manager, and our planning team, Ethan Bindernagle, Chip Griffin, as well as our city attorney and city manager, to provide a brief introduction to this evening's study session and to support your discussions throughout the meeting. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's study session is to introduce the proposal to create a new mixed-use special district within the North Downtown Specific Plan area, which would allow a mix of multifamily residential hotel and other compatible uses, and the opportunity to create and develop an updated compact urban auto dealership. The proposed amendments would apply to the 10 parcels totaling about six acres shown here in the dark blue near the center of your screen on this slide. It does not include the current Toyota dealership. Next slide, please. The applicant Stephen Scanlon of Real Development, representing Toyota Walnut Creek, has approached the city with a multi-stage process to implement this proposal. Stage one includes general plan, North Downtown Specific Plan, and zoning ordinance amendments to establish the necessary land use regulations to allow these uses. A development agreement to address terms, obligations, implementation, and timing responsibilities, and the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact report is required by SEQA. Stage two includes the subsequent design review and entitlements. So therefore, today, we're very focused on land use regulations, not a specific project. Stage three includes the construction of the approved development. We're in stage one now. On February 16th, 2021, the city council approved proceeding with a general plan amendment process and established a council ad hoc committee for the development agreement. The SEQA process has started, and we're drafting the notice of preparation at this time. Next slide, please.
I'm not seeing the slides. I hate to interrupt, but I don't see them.
Do, do other...
I'm, I'm seeing them, Mark.
I don't see them.
I see them.
I can see them too.
All right, let me check.
I can see them.
Might be my view. I'll check.
Let's see.
Is, is there anybody else that cannot see the slides besides Joseph?
Weird.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to point you out, Joseph, but it's on yours.
Okay, thank you. So I think there's some very important pieces to talk about, which in this high level of why does it matter? And the first aspect of why it matters is the revisioning of dealerships. Major car companies are beginning to think about what the future car dealership looks like, especially in city settings. We're seeing less inventory needed onsite and an emphasis in just-in-time delivery. The future development and supportive driverless cars is growing. We don't know when it's mainline, but it is certainly a trend that we're watching. Aging dealerships need to be remodeled and meet franchise requirements. The use of excess land is being challenged as land values increase, and the large surface inventory lots are beginning to move to garage structures. And we're also seeing changing consumer behaviors, the way that people are actually purchasing cars with an increase in online purchasing. Next slide, please. Economic development matters as well. Toyota Walnut Creek employs more than 160 people in the city, and there are more than 2,000 people employed citywide in auto sales, repair, and maintenance. Sales tax is important. The industry segment represents 33% of citywide sales tax revenues. Dealerships also add to the overall sense of a community. They add overall awareness, attraction, and visitation to the community. And this, if successful, will pilot new options and ways that we can retain and strengthen our dealerships in the future. Next slide. With this brief overview, we've spent the, or allocated the majority of the time for the applicant presentation. We'll have about 20 minutes, followed by public comment and facilitated dialogue of about 75 minutes. The key to recap our goals are to achieve that shared understanding of process, the proposed concept, gather ideas, perspectives to inform this process, and how we evaluate the proposal. And there will be no decisions at this meeting. We're very on, we're very early in this process. We, the staff, will be taking notes carefully, listening to those comments, issues, concerns, and ideas that we should track as we evaluate the project, and also as we prepare the environmental impact report. So now, I'll transition to our applicant presentation, which will be made by Stephen Scanlon. And we'll load his presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. You've provided a nice overview of what we're proposing. I think what we'll do is maybe provide some more backup information as to some of the whys, why we're doing what we're doing, how we're doing it. But I think I'll start with turning it over to Peter Stackpole, who's our architect lead, and kind of describe the area and give a little bit more orientation.
Thank you, Stephen. Here we are at kind of a high level overlooking the North Downtown Specific Plan. And the three sites that Mark mentioned are the, the blue sites up towards the top of the screen. And just a little orientation, the golden triangle to the left, one block. To the left of the golden triangle is the BART station, so we're very close to the BART, about a block away at the closest. North Main Street going north-south between the City Hall in the lower right and, and Golden Triangle. Next slide, please. We're going to cover a number of topics and get through it quickly for you. Stephen and I are going to tag-team items regarding location, economics, vision, and process, and a little bit of imagery. Next, please. Vicinity map going very high level. You can see our three sites in red in the middle. And the most important things to notice are, of course, BART in blue just to the left, Civic Park to the lower right. The pink area is the NDSP zone, and then traditional downtown bounded by the red lines just at the bottom there in yellow. Next, please. These are our three sites zoomed in, and we've titled them for ease of reference. Site A, which is a combination of eight sites. Site B in yellow on the other side of North Broadway, and Site C. Site D is the existing dealership location. It's not owned by Toyota, and therefore, it's not, not a part of the proposed special district. We've also titled parcels in case we need to refer to those with numbers. Next, please. Stephen?
So some of the background information, why, why we're here, why we're presenting, why we're asking for this additional land use flexibility. Starts with economics, like most real estate projects. And on, on Toyota Walnut Creek side, we have a mandate from Toyota Motors North America to update our franchise. It's old, it's aged, it operationally is obsolete, as well as obsolete from the franchise branding point of view. Second, we, we want to consolidate our operations. We're spread out over eight-plus acres, and it would be optimal for us to consolidate our auto sales and service into a single facility. The current dealership is not on Toyota Walnut Creek-owned land. It's on a lease. We're intentioning to repurpose that site, but to relocate the dealership, service, parts, and all of the support to one Toyota-owned site. Additionally, since we're operating, we're consolidating and relocating, we'd like to expand our operations. As Mark pointed out, we have 160 employees. We'd like to increase that, particularly on the, on the service side. What gets you here is the financing. The dealership is expensive. The relocation and consolidation, expansion will all be expensive. And having the additional land uses and a mixed-use opportunity allows us to create financial underpinning for the project. And then the last reason we're here is flexibility, and we're going to get into this a little bit more later, but there's a lot of uncertainties today, and the pandemic has probably added to it. So we're looking to create some optionality in the entitlement process going forward so that we can better point our, our future facility or development proposal as something that has some long-term financial sense to it. Next slide, please. We also think there's some compelling economics on the city side. One, sales, obviously, sales tax revenue retention. Toyota generates quite a bit of sales tax from car sales. Additional sales tax expansion from the additional car sales plus the expanded service component. Employment generation, the expansion of the dealership would create more jobs. The mixed-use land uses would create an expanded property tax base. And overall, by, by this intensity of development, mixed use in an NDSP, we think that it's going to have a ripple effect without to the wider North Downtown communities. Next slide, please.
We see this project catalyzing the North Downtown Specific Plan in several important ways. The bullet points on the left are some stated goals pulled from the North Downtown Specific Plan. So the project can provide sufficient scale to jumpstart the specific plan and attract interest to the district. It can protect and enhance existing jobs and auto sales and service industry in the plan area. It provides modification of the ASCM zone to a more pedestrian-friendly zone, and it will support a diverse, sustainable mix of uses, including housing, workplaces, auto sales, and community spaces. Next, please. We're before you tonight with what is essentially a land use change, but in the future, in a future stage of approval, we'll be proposing an actual development proposal. And this proposal will create a future vision that addresses several important factors. It can create a special district that provides flexibility to the, that allows the dealership to identify and marry to the future highest and best use. It's a transit-oriented develop, development, as I pointed out earlier, because of its proximity to major features in the downtown area, including BART. It has specific plan benefits and provides a roadmap to help achieve key goals of the specific plan. It will help expand the tax base and converts what is 6.11 acres to approximately 20 acres of taxable base. And it's a semi-urban solution, providing a new dealership prototype that solves for its own, for its in-town context. Next, please.
So as Mark mentioned earlier, we've, we've broken this up into three stages. And I think the over, the sort of overarching reason for the three stages was really pandemic-related. When we embarked in the first, second quarter of 2020, really didn't know what the real estate market would look like coming out of the pandemic, but didn't want to lose time, particularly with Toyota Motors North America in, in the timeline, specific timeline that we'd agreed with them. So by breaking it up, we're taking advantage of the time during the pandemic and maximizing our throughput. Next slide. So in stage one, we're seeking general plan, specific plan and zoning standard changes. We're, the plan is to facilitate dealership retention. We're trying to use this time effectively on the entitlement side during the pandemic so that when we come out of the pandemic, we've got enough flexibility to look at this mixed-use project in various land use options. We're trying to keep tight to our schedule with Toyota North America, so we're using, again, the pandemic time to facilitate the entitlement phase. Also, the financial model, depending on the entitlement and where we are at the end of the stage one, we should have a financial model nailed down with Toyota. And then the development agreement, using stage one to understand what our development rights and obligations would be relating to the community going forward. And then the final, as Peter mentioned, this is a prototypical project for Toyota. One of the reasons they've given us the latitude to extend our timeline for them is because it's prototype, and they're looking at this as a potential solution for other dealerships in similar circumstances. Next slide, please. Stage two, once we're complete with the entitlement development agreement and the land use changes, we enter into the design phase. The goal is that that comes right, right around the end of the pandemic. We've got a better view of where real estate and financing is. Contract of selection, look for our building permits. And then ultimately, we have to get a final sign-off from Toyota Motors North America for the final plan, the prototype. Next slide, please. Stage three is the construction phase. Our plan is to keep the dealership in operation during construction. That's good for everybody, tax revenue, employment, operations. And so there will be some temp facilities required in order to facilitate that. Stage three will include construction. And then depending on the development proposal we bring forward, there'll be a stabilization phase, whether it's renting, selling, leasing, obviously, training new employees. That'll take place all during stage three. Next slide, please.
Wanted to show you some images of what you typically see with mixed-use conditions incorporating dealerships. And usually, they're incorporated in fairly dense urban conditions where the problem is very high density, very tight to streets with office or residential at a large scale above the dealership. And so this is the kind of project you normally see for a mixed-use dealership. You're probably familiar with this kind of thing on Van Ness Avenue traditionally, where dealerships were incorporated in larger buildings. We have a little bit different long-term design problem to solve because our situation is one where we have a mid-sized city with dealerships on the perimeter and density of down, the density of downtown is expanding into what has traditionally been dealership territory. And we need to bring these two uses together at more of a mid-scale rather than a large scale. Now, there aren't a lot of examples of that specific kind of project extent in the, in the, at large. So what we're going to do is show you some examples, images of buildings that are about the right scale, texture, and character of the kind of project that we see happening within our 50 and 35-foot height limits. And most of these images are over High Bay Retail, which is really what our auto dealership frontage is as it exposes to the street. Next, please. So we'll start with some hotel examples, three and four-story within or close to 50-foot, which is our height limit on our larger site. And you can see High Bay Retail on the ground floor of each of these. And dealership would easily fit into that kind of frontage. Lots of glass visibility into the, the retail, and in our case, dealership space. Next, please. Residential examples, again, mostly three and four-story within 50 feet. We have one example on the left there, Kingsway Honda, which is a much higher project than we're proposing and way above our height limit. But that's a horizontal mixed-use example, and we wanted to include something that showed that kind of relationship between the uses as well. And again, the High Bay Retail frontage on the ground floor. Next, please. More residential examples, many different ways to treat these architecturally and create a nice scale and a relationship to the street. But again, all with the High Bay Retail at the ground with lots of visibility into the functions inside. Next, please. Some more commercial examples, commercial floor-tofloors are a little higher than residential, so you would probably see fewer floors of commercial above a dealership with High Bay dimensions. Next, please. And we'll go to Stephen to summarize.
So in, in combination with what the city's already presented for the joint session, there's some, you know, some summary highlights, some takeaways. Some of the operating principles, flexibility, looking for some land use flexibility so that as we come out of the post-COVID pandemic world, we can find the highest and best use for the 6.11-acre site. We think the economics are mutually sustaining. We staged our process to keep things moving and moving as quickly as we possibly can. We think it's a catalyst project for the NDSP. We're putting, we're putting density on a, on a BART stop, so we're moving it, it works, it's transit-oriented. Increasing the property tax base, employment support. We think this will ultimately boost pedestrian activity, one of the stated goals in the NDSP, and contribute to a vibrant mixed-use district. So we see that these is all sort of overarching goals for the, for the special district. And I think that concludes. Thank you.
Right. And let me now set aside, we have 20 minutes for questions from commissioners. So commissioners should unmute their mic and raise the hand feature to alert me if you have any questions. There's a separate segment later in the meeting where we'll hear comments. Mark Wardlaw, our Community Development Director, will assist in answering questions or directing them to the applicant or the appropriate staff for a response. With the amount of commissioners and the very tight timeline we have tonight, I ask that any commissioners asking questions, please keep your questions brief and within, within one minute during this time. So these are questions. We'll have time for comments afterwards once we hear from any other questions as well as public comment. So raise your hands and we'll go from there. And it looks like, first one I see is Bob Pickett.
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. The, the gap that exists in the proposal on the east side of North Broadway, what, what happens with that? How do you create a cohesive development when you've got a gap between two of the parcels included in this proposal?
So first of all, I, I think, Bob, you're speaking to the existing dealership?
Yes.
Okay. Applicant, what is your intention with the existing dealership? And then we'll follow with the staff comment.
Sure. It's, the existing site's under a long-term lease, Bob. We have another 18 years to go, and it's renewable. So our plan is to continue to use it in, in service of dealership operations. As we haven't finalized our development or even really begun our development proposal, I don't have a specific response for what the intended use is, but other than to say we intend to use it.
Is the owner of that property reluctant to participate in this change?
They were unwilling to sell. We approached about a purchase. It's a long-term, it's, it's a long-term owner. It's a, it's a trust, and it's been held in trust for quite a while. They've owned it for a long time.
One, one other question. The, the, the images that were shown to us by Mr. Stackpole showed some multi-story display areas. Would that be a concept that you would be contemplating? Or do you think your display areas and your dealership... Or do you think your display areas and your dealership operations would be maintained on the ground floors?
We haven't, we haven't explored the specifics yet of what we would do, but we have talked about in generalities, high bay dealership frontage. So that could be, it could be a multi-story display, but we haven't, we haven't gone to the point of really developing it further.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Can I, I'd like to remind everybody that, you know, we're at a very high level. So some of, at this stage of the process, so some of your questions, we won't be able to answer, but we'll certainly log them for our, our journey forward. Thank you.
Right. Just remember that all, thank you, Mark. All the commissions will have, will be seeing this come through your commissions for all the details at a later date. Before we move on to Commissioner, well, actually I saw Commissioner Krelig's hand go down, but no, there it is. It's up. Before I go there, I just want to quickly mention the audio is back up. And so for anybody watching on one of our different channels, you can go to Zoom and when we ask for public comment, you can go to the meeting ID, which is 955-0267-0010. And the passcode is 653475. So when we call for public comment, you can raise your hand during that time. So Commissioner Krelig, let's move on to you.
Great, thank you. Any idea on the potential number of residential units and also whether or not you were thinking owner occupied or rental? Thank you.
Applicant.
We've done, we've done yield studies as a part, as a part of the Sequo process. I think we've looked at 600 plus units as a function of what we could fit on the sites. But we haven't gone forward with a specific proposal yet. So at this point, what we're really looking at is studying the most conservative approach in, in the EIR process. And then as we move further through the process, we'll identify and hone in on a, on a development proposal. And no thoughts on for sale or for rent at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Casey Case.
Hi. Is there a plan for on the ground floor? Will it all be Toyota and car related functions? Or will there be other opportunities for commercial components?
Applicant, do you have some general comment about that? I know that we will be evaluating that through the design process and, and the Sequa evaluation.
Yeah, we, we are actually in, in our, in several of our schemes, we have looked at the possibility of other retail uses on ground floor and frontage.
Okay. And is there any conflict between, I mean, I'm seeing that it's being done elsewhere, but the, the proximity of housing to the dealership just with like sound and fumes, is that an issue or that gets all sorted when you guys do the architectural and planning?
That will be sorted out through the process of, you know, our evaluation and our work with the applicant and more particularly sorted out when there's an actual proposal.
Okay. And will there be consideration for perpetuating that maker's row area? So it's encouraging, you know, space, affordable space for creativity or public gathering. Although, will that be considered as this irons out?
At, at this point, I think we'll be evaluating the impact of the project and its opportunities to implement other aspects of the north downtown specific plans like that particular subject.
Okay. And then lastly, will there be an affordability component to the housing?
The housing affordability regulations apply to, you know, will apply to the project and in, in whatever way that it's being implemented. And then some of the aspects of uses and alternatives to the project would be discussed and evaluated through the development agreement.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, Brandt Anderson.
Thank you. The, I'm curious from the applicant's standpoint, is, is anticipated that the development proposal will be generally within the broad outlines of the specific plan? Or do you anticipate general plan amendments and zoning beyond the, the current specific plan?
I'll take a stab at that first. So the project does include now some certain amendments to the general plan. So that's really part of the, the proposal that's being discussed. It would also require amendments to the north downtown specific plan and zoning. So that's part of the actual application at this point in time.
David German.
I haven't seen the plan, but does it include the cost of the infrastructure around the lots? Sewer and water, where's then by where?
At, at the level of the general plan amendment, I'm sure the applicant will be considering costs and development feasibility. But for the general plan amendment in this stage one, we won't probably be digging in too deeply to the development aspects and costs.
Okay. Peter Leesack.
Thank you. A couple of comments first, I think where Bob Pickett was going and my concern is similar that if you're going to change the specific plan and the general plan and create a community district, that that district should be cohesive and include all the parcels and not be selective to the parcels. From my perspective, that would be a specific plan and development amendment opposed to a larger general plan amendment and something that the applicant in the city should consider. As part of that, I believe the intent of the north downtown specific plan was to activate streets and require retail frontage along all those streets, at least at the ground level. And I think that that's something that we should ensure is part of the remains as part of the requirements for, for the project. Third, I'm, I'm a little confused about the process and the staging. And this question probably relates to the Sequa application and the subsequent EIR that will be performed. So that since the project is now going to be required to analyze for VMT and will have a, a various components that are not just residential near a BART station, they're going to have a hotel and other retail uses. There's a variety of study that needs to be done as part of that. And it's going to be, need to be specific to a project description to an application that I'm understanding is not yet developed and before us. So I guess the question for city staff is how do you scope a subsequent EIR that's appropriate for a project if the project description is not detailed yet and before the, the, the city?
Thank you. Your first two questions were really comments, so we'll put those into the comment category. Your third question about the environmental impact report is that based on the land uses that they're requesting within the building envelopes, we'll be identifying the, you know, the practical and feasible maximum development intensity for residential hotel office and other non-residential uses, including the dealership and the Germaine facilities like parking structure. And then based on those land use capacities, we'll evaluate them through Sequa, we'll identify the most impactful uses, but also the, the impacts that may result, including VMT greenhouse gas reductions and all of the other necessary subjects that we have to study through Sequa. And we're tearing from the already certified north downtown specific plan. So it will be a thorough analysis and it will be based on the limits of development, not necessarily their specific project subsequent to the certification of certified EIR. Then that project, when it starts going into their second stage of entitlements, they'll have to either conform with what was evaluated through the EIR or there would be some additional modification. So stage one is really the land use regulatory framework with, that would allow their intended uses and that Sequa evaluation. Stage two would be the entitlement process.
Jamie Salcedo.
I was wondering if there, I think it's with parcel A that is between North Broadway and North Main Street. And it looks like it, it crosses that entire through the entire block. And that is a pretty long gap currently in terms of the circulation in that area. It's a pretty long block between Central Road, it looks like, and Pine Street. And I'm just wondering if there is any potential for any changes to circulation to allow for cut through mid-block, particularly if we are going to increase the number of people living in that area. And if the idea is that these are going to be pedestrians largely and utilizing BART, how are we going to make it accommodating for that type of, of mode of transportation getting to and from that parcel to the BART station?
Thank you. I'll take a stab first. So we'll be evaluating the project proposal to the ideas, concepts and objectives that are in the already approved north downtown specific plan, which includes trail connections and the concept of a mid-block connector. So we will be evaluating that. I'll ask the applicant if he has anything to add.
I don't, we, that's exactly what we're, we're planning on doing.
Do we have any other questions at this time? Joseph Gorni. You're on mute. Joseph, you're on mute.
Is it, it may be too early for this, but is the expectation that all the buildings will have to go through designer view commission? And they're not going to fall into the state exemptions that allowing the objective design standards to be used?
It's probably too early to tell that at this point in time. And state requirements would certainly prevail unless otherwise modified through a, a different form like a development agreement.
Okay. Second question, the buildings that you showed is the examples were, you know, very good, very contemporary, very good materials, very modern. Is that the kind of expectation that that's what the architecture is going to be as the project develops? Again, it's going to set quite a precedence in that area. So I was wondering if, if there's any forethought as what we're looking at as designer view commission or?
I'll ask the applicant their intention about the images that were shown relative to some subsequent entitlement process.
Sure. All across, I think there's a common theme across all the images that we presented, and that is that the, the notion of high bay retail and the applicability to a dealership. So it sort of anchors, the dealership sort of anchors the base of the proposed mixed use project. As far as what gets done above, we haven't really, Joseph progressed that far. But the idea it will be a Toyota project, it will be a Toyota branded project. So the likelihood is that it will, we have two masters to serve. One is the, one is the Toyota brand and those standards and how we approach a mixed use development in the Toyota vernacular. So we're exploring that right now with Gendler. And then the upper register in the land uses that we're seeking, residential hospitality and a mix of commercial. They all have very different presentations. So what we tried to show was a range of presentations of each one of those typologies. And I think those are relatively accurate in sort of design direction.
Thank you.
Sure.
We're just at about the 20 minute mark for the questions. So unless a commissioner has a burning question that just has not been asked yet, and it's more of a comment, then we'll wait till the comments towards the end. So at this time, I will open this up to the public for comments. And if any member of the public would wish to provide public comments at this time, please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. If you'd like to provide a public comment, this is the time to do it. For those who desire to provide public comments on the second, on the study session item, please raise your hand now. As a reminder, each speaker will have two minutes to make their oral remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes. Written comments submitted have been and will during this item be posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide oral comments.
We do have speakers. We will go ahead and bring in Francine Hughes.
Hey Francine, once you unmute yourself, you're good to go.
Here I am. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Car buying is very different and you're stating that you need larger, a larger facility, which doesn't make sense that you would need a larger place. I mean Tesla's selling out of, you know, the computer. And I don't understand you, you bring up how this is going to increase, you know, traffic and your economic base when you're basically going to be selling approximately the same number of cars that you now sell. So I don't see any increase in our tax base from that.
Okay. Thanks, Francine. Hold on, hold on the line and staff will be addressing these after all the public comments. Do we have any further public comments, Suzie?
No, may I? I don't see any additional hands raised for comment.
Okay. Well, then close the public comments and bring this back to council and staff. So let's first address and Mark, I'll put you on the spot on these on the public comment questions that came forth. And if you were the applicant would like to address those.
Thank you. I'll ask the applicant to address the operations of the dealership.
So two things, with a new dealership, two things are historically correct. Sales do go up, car sales do go up. And Toyota doesn't have as a dealership, the Tesla model. So we're kind of comparing apples and oranges when you compare Tesla and Tesla's marketing presence and Toyota's. And the second thing is we need a bigger dealership because we're consolidating operations and our operations right now are undersized. And our service component is also being enlarged. We're also changing the nature of car servicing and bays are different, sizes are different. There's a, there's a battery and electronic component that's different. All of those will be incorporated into the new dealership.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So now we'll bring this back to the study group. And we have set aside up to 25 minutes for comments from commissioners. So based on the number of commissioners, which I believe we're at 18 maybe, we've got about one minute per commissioner. So if you have additional comments you want to share after the meeting, please email them to your commission secretary. And I ask you respectfully, limit your time to that one minute at this point. I'll call on commissioners, beginning with transportation commission, followed by design review and finally planning commission. As noted, each commissioner will have that minute and they should unmute their mic when called upon. So we'll start with transportation commission and Jared Ash, you're first.
Great. Thank you, everybody, for your time today. I wanted to see, and maybe this is more for city staff, how will this impact the other car dealerships? Do we have an understanding of what they own in that downtown area, what they lease? And have we had any conversations with them? Because I think we're going to set a precedent. And as the folks from the Toyota dealership have said, is this is really starting to plan for the dealership in the future? So I'm just wondering how, this is a comment for the future planning, how this will impact other dealerships and other changes along North Main. But other than that, I, I like the overall concept. I think it fits into a more walkable But other than that, I like the overall concept. I think it fits into a more walkable downtown and I look forward to working on issues in transportation where we deal with safety of pedestrian crossings and improved bike lanes in that area, which is other things that we're working on shared mobility. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ash. Jamie Salsito is next.
I think at this point in the process, conceptually, I think this could be a really beneficial project to the city of Walnut Creek in terms of really improving the quality of the land use in that area and, and how that will impact transportation needs, making it more walkable, more pedestrian friendly. I do have some concerns about how that gets executed, but I know we'll be looking into that further as we get further down the road in the process. But I'm, I'm excited to see how this could transform that area of the city to be a more inviting place for people other than cars.
Thank you, Commissioner Salsito. Commissioner David German is next. David, you're on mute.
No comment right now.
Okay. Thank you, David. Commissioner Samantha Kegel is next.
Yes, I think this is exciting. I think it could be very positive for North Downtown in general. I am excited about a boost in pedestrian activity and being able to give residency opportunity to live that close to BART and downtown. I think it'll energize the area. I'd be curious to know if there's data around pedestrian activity in similar projects. I'd be curious to know if we can have pedestrian safety projects built into the development agreements. I know we oftentimes don't qualify for funding for some of these projects when we try to go for it, especially around the BART station. You know, there are some projects that we've been eyeballing for a while. And then as far as parking is concerned for the developments, I've always loved the concept of shared vehicles and, you know, since we're working with a vehicle provider Toyota, I think it'd be really cool to look at doing shared, a shared car program or something for the developments, if that even is a possibility. I'm just throwing it out there. I think there's a lot of creative opportunity here. Thank you for presenting this to us.
Thank you. And Chair Danny Milks next.
I really like the concept and idea of where this is going. And I think it will bring a lot to downtown and expand the downtown, but in a way that is already expanding like, you know, the apartments around there are already going up. Brio Apartments is kind of the first, and I feel like this is just expanding upon that. And I do like that close, right sandwich right between the Iron Horse Trail and the BART and the highway. So whichever way you want to get to wherever you're going, you've got an option. I would like to actually remind everyone that on the north side of Brio is a, is a small walking path. And so the south of the two parcels on North Broadway, the Toyota has kind of comes catty corner and there might be a way to connect that. So everybody from Brio and even possibly the Iron Horse Trail could be walking through this new pedestrian way to get to the shopping stores and then to BART and back and forth along some kind of pedestrian avenue along that avenue. But otherwise, it looks like a great, great plan and idea.
Great. Thank you, Danny. And that wraps up the Transportation Commission. Next, we'll start with Design Review Commission and we'll start with Commissioner Charles Krelling.
Great. Thank you. It's a very interesting concept, very, very urban, of course. I know generally speaking, the community, in the community, at least I've heard, there's a lot of concern about the exponential growth of high-density housing across the city. So just something to think about. Especially when we hear that it could be up to 600 units at, at maximum density. So that's something to think about and also thinking about maybe a mix of rentals versus owner occupied. I think people would love the ability to be able to own a place to live in the various downtown areas. And then finally, the one thing I would want us to think about is to maybe put maybe just enough low-income units that we still have DRC review versus going so high on the low income that the state press, the state law takes over and it's just objective design standards. And I say that mainly because this will be such a prominent precedent-setting development for us that I think it's important to have the design and landscape component, the city having good input on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph Gorni.
Okay, I'll stick to DRC things. I want to make sure, and the applicant mentioned this, there's sufficient sort of indoor drop-off space as this project develops. As people are using the auto, I just want to make sure there's not lines of cars backing into the street. I think it's important to come to the designer view early and do true study sessions. I know that the staff loves to have all the C3 and all the engineering worked out before we see it, but I think to establish a dialogue with Designer View early with a little bit less detail and concepts will be important. And again, not a monolithic architecture, partial A is huge, and I think it needs to be broken up in some different types of architecture. And I think that the applicant alluded to that with the different type of uses. I think there are pass-through opportunities for the public on site A, which I'd love to see between the two major roads. I think we'll be looking carefully at outdoor space and how it's integrated, both public outdoor space and private. I like the quality of modern architecture that's being proposed. Very positive about the use in general and the new auto options. I think it's a good urbanization of an unused area of Walnut Creek. I think Walnut Creek is becoming a city and we need to continue, or larger city. And we definitely need to consider projects like this, but it will have a large impact if other properties develop similarly. So I think the city needs to be focused and, and on that to make sure that as other projects around it develop, that as it sets the tone for years, that it's taken care of in both parking and transportation and everything else. And one thing I'd like to see at some point from staff is some, some examples in town of projects that have a 2.8 FAR because we're asked to do it on the site. And I don't know whether that's Ave and Arroyo, but which projects in town already have the 2.8? So we have a better idea of what the density is going to be. Otherwise, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Brian Killian.
I have one comment on landscaping. We're getting to be very urban. We're losing landscaping, the price of land is going up. So if this wants to be a more pedestrian friendly, whether a street tree program is brought back to where they know, you know, a certain amount of trees so that the engineers can plan for that and route their utilities and everything ahead of schedule rather than coming in and saying, well, we can't put any street trees because we have sewer, joint trench and everything else. But they know if the city puts in a requirement that street trees are required, you know, then the engineers can accomplish that ahead of time. Other than that, no comment at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Killian. Did Carlos Filia get on? I don't think he did. Okay. So we'll move on to Chair Casey Case.
So I, I really like the concept coming here. I think it's ironic and awesome that Toyota is promoting a transit-oriented living thing that's less dependent on a car. But one of the things I will be looking for in the future is how it's activating that space. So I'm, I'm really interested in what happens on the, the ground plane and exploring the retail opportunities and how if we are moving vehicles in and out in the capacity that you guys are presenting as Commissioner Killian mentioned, like how are we treating that streetscape to still make it feel like it's a place that people want to live? Cause I, I'm wrapping my head around that conflict and I think it, I think it can happen, but I will be looking for that. And I'd also love to see how we're integrating that industrial feel because I like the fact that this is an urban opportunity in a part of town that doesn't have quite the same rural main street feel. So I think it'd be fun to play up that edginess of the district. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Case. All right, that wraps up the DRC. We'll move on to the Planning Commission now. We'll start with Ken Strongman.
It's an exciting project, exciting opportunity. And mostly other commissioners have already raised my issues and concerns. So I'll say no more comments at this point.
Thank you, Ken. And next Commissioner Melissa Ward.
Hi, thank you. I, I agree. I think people pretty much hit on most of my topics. Pedestrian safety, trees, street trees, circulation generally. I think some consideration of the style and appearance should be given. It's not necessarily just a truncated glass high-rise that we're trying to put in here. There's a lot of brickwork and kind of loft kind of factory feel to some of the other areas of downtown. So maybe that should be considered to kind of merge those two areas in the transition spaces. And just as a final point, just respectfully, I hope maybe you can reconsider using the phrase, we have two masters to serve in your future presentations. It was a bit jarring and kind of an unnecessary analogy in this context. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Next Commissioner Brandy Anderson.
Thank you. I, I think that since the North Downtown specific plan is just quite recent, a lot of work has been spent on that, that it's important to, to adhere closely to what, what that requires. That, that said, I think that plan is particularly you know, set up in such a way to encourage creativity and trying some new things. So I think it's, it's important to you know, view this project as, you know, one of the early attempts to see where that specific plan really leads us if we're going to look at creativity in this space. One thing that I hope we can see is in, in any non-automotive ground floor things that are planned to make sure that those are set up in such a way that they, they make a coherent whole. If there's going to be, you know, non-automotive, other retail or manufacturing things proposed that they, they make sense among themselves. And, but I'm looking forward to, to working with the Toyota group. I also like the idea of connecting it to transit. I dropped my Toyota off there every couple of months and, and pull my bicycle out of the back and it got to work and it works out pretty well.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Next, Commissioner Bob Pickett.
I like the, I like the concepts. I'm supportive of that. Just a couple of points, I think, I'd like to see considered as the project moves forward, we get into more detail. I think a greater effort needs to be made to incorporate the excluded parcels on the east side of North Broadway. If you have an 18-year lease, certainly the owners of that property only stand to benefit if they're incorporated. And I think a cohesive development is very important. Otherwise, maybe we just exclude the two parcels on the east side. You need to be able to address inventory, storage, how you're going to deal with that. That's constantly a problem in Walnut Creek right now. Maybe that, the dynamics of that are changing, but address that. Also need to address parking for your employees, customers and residents of the area. This is going to create a very high density and high intensity need for dealing with vehicles. Even though it's transit oriented, there's still going to be a lot of cars associated with your dealership and employees. Address the noise that might be generated by your service facility and how it might impact residences nearby. We dealt with that on the Volvo dealership expansion. And also you're displacing, I believe, a lot of auto-oriented services in some of the land that you own, at least. I haven't been up there recently, but a lot of smaller services that are provided to the automobile industry. In that area, you're displacing those. And just like we've been concerned about displacing residents of places, we're also displacing small businesses and people that serve car owners outside of the dealership environment. So I think you need to, the city needs to consider how we're going to deal with the loss of those other services if we're replacing them with housing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Our next Commissioner Peter Lezak.
Thank you. I'll just support what I said earlier about the, the district being a district should include all these other parcels. And I agree with Bob, if, if it's not an inclusive district, then it's not an overall district and parcels should be excluded. Otherwise, it shouldn't be a proposal for a district, general plan amendment for a district. It should be a general plan amendment for a specific use change to specific parcels. I think that's very important because where I was going with the EIR concept is whatever is the full scope of the district should be what's studied in the EIR. And I'm incredibly supportive of the general concept. And I'd like to see there be as much housing as possible, including I'm supportive of taller buildings that exceed the Measure A height limit that would have higher densities that would only be required through a variety of, of application of, of state rules. And if that means that we don't have the same kind of planning commissioner, design review approval, I'm, I'm supportive of that. But I would suggest that if that's something that the applicant is considering, that it's something that should be thought about. I don't know that it needs to be specifically defined, but it should be thought about in the overall unit count so that it can be studied as part of the scope of the SEIR upfront. If you want to come in with a specific application later, I get it. But the, the larger window of the scope of the project should be studied upfront. And then lastly, I'd be interested to hear what kind of additional community benefit the project and the applicant would support as part of the development agreement and the things that they're proposing with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lezak. Next, Commissioner and Vice Chair Steve Reiser.
Thank you, Mayor Wilk. I don't have a lot to add. I just want to thank the staff and the applicant. I think I'm very much in favor of the concept. I think it's innovative. I think it's a smart way to address our housing numbers and I look forward to seeing it materialize. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiser. And last, but certainly not least, we have the Chair of the Planning Commission, Commissioner Brian Crusellik.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a lot of details to be worked out for the project, but I'm confident that we will end up with a really great project for both the city and Toyota. And having said that, I have no new comments to add other than what everybody else has already contributed. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all the commissioners for your comments. Should something strike you after the meeting or wake you up late at night, feel free to email your commission secretary and let them know so they can pass the word along as well. Lot of great comments in there. We'll now go to the council to hear their comments. As a reminder, we need to adjourn with that. We have a hard stop at 30 minutes, but I know that with a council meeting coming up at six o'clock, we'd probably like a little more time if possible. So what I would like to now quickly say as we wrap up on this, that the, all of the comments that are shared this evening, both from the commissioners as well as the council, will be used in preparation of the formal application and future presentations to the commissions, the community and the council. And so let's go to the council and we'll have about three minutes each on council to make our comments. And of course, we're going to be seeing this a lot more. So let's first move to Councilmember Darling.
Well, as a member of the ad hoc group working on this, I've been, I really appreciate the amount of time and thought you guys all brought to this. I've been taking lots of notes. And so I've got lots more work to do on this. I think it is a great idea, but I think it is such a big chunk of our area that we need to do it thoughtfully and with those connections and the other attributes you guys have talked about. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the other member of the ad hoc committee, Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think there were some questions that might need to be answered if you don't mind if I ask staff these questions just for clarification, because some of the commissioners mentioned things that basically spur the question. And then, but I actually have one question for the applicant first, if you don't mind. Still here. Business displacement, those parcels, can you tell us how much of those, that 6.1 acres are actually leased to other businesses? Plus or minus?
Right now, there's no, there's two businesses that recently closed and 1.4 acres and approximately one acre, but neither of those businesses have been in operation for a while.
So right now, it's all Toyota?
Correct. So any displacement, any operational displacement right now would be Toyota, displacing Toyota.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. And Mark, I had a couple of questions for you. Thank you. Thanks, Steve. And Mark, I had a couple of questions for you, but it may be Steve Mattis. The, right now, one of the commissioners mentioned interest in what the community benefits would be. Can you clarify what the ad hoc committee is doing in regard to community development, community benefits in the development agreement?
Sure. I can answer that. The ad hoc committee is working with the applicant on the terms for a development agreement that would include, that would include public benefits that are from ideas that the council has identified as being important and to address some of the issues that were raised by the commissioners this evening as well, too.
Great. Thank you. And then the other question, Steve, there were both Commissioner Pickett and Commissioner Lezak mentioned wanting, is it a zone, is it an overlay district? If parcels owned by other individuals are excluded, do you feel a need to opine upon that?
I can just share that the, that the configuration of the proposed district right now is one that's acceptable as an overlay district from a legal standpoint. The issue of whether or not those, those middle parcels between the two on the east side should be brought in. That's within the discretion of the city if they wish to include that in there, but it is not a legal obligation that it be in there. There's the, the current configuration could be its own overlay district.
Thank you. There were, there was a couple of questions about state law streamlining requirements. In other words, is any of this going to trigger what I would call the SB 35 objective design standards? Then there was questions about concerns about so much mixed use, dense development. And I thought maybe somebody might like to mention what our RENA numbers are looking like since HCD has approved the RENA numbers.
I'll defer to Mark on that.
Councilmember Silva, we are just about to receive in this summer our estimated RENA allocations, which is coming from the state to A Bag. And we expect to have a number of approximately 5,800 units to satisfy in the range of income ranging from very low to low to moderate income and above. And so that's a large number and we're assessing, you know, the capacity that we'll need to have to satisfy that RENA. So it is a large number.
So this project that's proposed at its maximum capacity in terms of number of residential units is about one tenth of what we looks, what it looks like we need to plan for in the next housing element cycle.
That's correct.
Thank you. So my comments, I'm very excited about this and I want to tell all of you that both Cindy Darling and I are honored to be serving on the ad hoc committee negotiating this. But also, we were really looking forward to having you all participate in this because we were describing this environment and what happens as something that we did at the beginning of the major renovation to Broadway Plaza in 2011. And it was really just that opportunity for all these commissions that have skin in the game to be able to comment early on. So thank you very much for your time. This is a huge economic development opportunity. It's not just a land use proposal and it has all of the elements of residential, auto sales and service, custom manufacturing. Could it be some hospitality? Could it be some office commercial? And the, the challenge for staff and the applicant is really for this large site and all of this potential flexibility, you can't even imagine the number of scenarios that are spinning around in everyone's heads. So all of your comments have been really, really helpful. It will be helpful as we talk to the applicant about community benefits and also as it comes back to us in the coming months as we move forward. So thank you very much. And thank you to the Toyota people for making a presentation that was very, very understandable and clear in the short amount of time that you had.
Thank you. Councilmember Silva and Councilmember Haskin next.
Yeah, it's always tough to follow us. And she asked all the really good questions. But I'm going to just say that this is the first time in a long time that this group of August, people who take very serious responsibility for our community have gotten together. And it is amazing to watch you and all of the information and expertise you bring. Pretty glad you didn't get down into finer details that you kept high level. I think that's the most effective help that we, the council and the applicant can have at this moment. And so thank you all for your deep thoughts. Thank you all for your participation. Thank you for Cindy for taking all the pressure off of me about asking all those very important questions. And I'm very excited as well to look and see what this ultimately will turn out. I actually think it's going to be better than any of us can imagine at this moment.
And Mayor Pro Tem Francois. Thank you, Councilmember Haskin.
And thank you, Mayor. And thank you for how well you've, you've laid this out with staff and how thoughtfully you've organized this. I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the commissioners' input and feedback. That's been very valuable and helpful to me. I think there, this is an exciting project. I think it's to be a real catalyst project and a real feather in Walnut Creek's cap of how a, an older land use can get redeveloped and re-energized and have an effect on a larger area. Some of the issues that were raised previously, I think, are going to be important going forward are the design component. So I'm entrusting the Design Review Commission with that, and I know they'll do a good job. As Commissioner Gorni said, making sure that it's not a massive block on parcel A, but also that we really achieve that vision of a modern semi urban dealership. The transportation part of this, I think, is important as well. Commissioner Milks pointed out that pathway on Brio. Thank you. I think that is important, that there be a connection through this site so that we can finally help provide a pathway to BART for people that are living in that area. And for the planning commission, I think what will be really important is there's a blank in the, in the proposed amendment to the North Downtown specific plan of that table of land uses and what should go on the ground floor. So we know, we know residential and hotel, but the other retail and non residential uses, I think really we need to be creative in terms of what those will be and how to activate that space. For the council on the development agreement, in addition to the community benefits, which I think will be important, it would be nice to see a proposed phasing plan for the development and particularly the location of the dealership. I think it will be a real signature project and probably deserves merits to be on Main Street as opposed to tucked further back in the project. You're probably, the applicant might be thinking the same thing and, and have the service components in some other location. I did appreciate the comment about, about the boundaries of the district and the logic on that. And I think it's a, it's a fair comment and critique. And I think it could really go either way. I think it, as the city attorney said, that you could include those two parcels in between and perhaps even increase the number of residential units that are looked at in the EIR, or you could exclude them and think those two parcels to the east of Broadway might be used for some sort of service use as part of a horizontal mixed use. So I don't have a solution for that, but thank you for getting me thinking about it. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Francois. And so I'll give my comments. First, I have a question just for staff. And this really comes from some residents who have contacted me in the last couple of days. And that is because there has been some different developments in the past where there was one project proposed and then it was switched and it turned into something else or even cases where potentially more housing would be built afterwards. What is to ensure that this will be mixed use automotive residential? Like, for example, what, would there be the potential in a couple of years that the developer within say, actually, we're going to turn this into all residential?
Mayor, that's a two part answer and I'll leave the second part to city attorney. So first, through the general plan and legislative process, you know, that will define what they can achieve. And then in addition to that, they'll also be able to implement whatever state requirements would be provided at that point in time. I think one of the important features that the ad hoc committee is looking at in terms of the development agreement is, is really with that, for example, the focus on the dealership. Is there a mechanism through the development agreement that can help ensure that? And I'll ask Steve if he has anything to add to that.
Briefly, Mayor, I would just add that the ad hoc committee is looking very carefully at that issue and addressing it both through the phasing of the original development and provisions that relate to the continued use of the, of the auto dealership space going into the future. So we are looking at that, discussing those issues with the applicant's team now.
Great. Thank you. And so my comments are, this looks like a great project in a great area. It builds much needed housing and it puts it where we are hoping to direct it, which is downtown where people can walk to downtown and, and the different restaurants and retail and services. And they can walk to major public transit. This is exactly what we talk about when we talk about having local control over where housing goes. It, in addition, it keeps jobs in town because if there weren't to be the Toyota dealership, then there wouldn't be those jobs in town. So it helps the overall housing jobs balance too. And it also keeps Toyota in town, of course, because we already did lose a major car dealership a couple of years ago. It helps Makers Row where it would have people that live in the area be able to walk to Makers Row and would help to energize that. And it addresses a need for a 21st century auto dealership. And we are seeing this kind of movement towards something that doesn't require as many hundreds of cars in one lot as we remember growing up with 20, 30 years ago. So overall, those are my comments. I appreciate everybody's comments on this. And again, want to thank the council and the commissioners and the applicant for joining us this evening to discuss the important proposal here. All of these questions and comments and insights are going to be shared throughout the entire application and presentation process. And with that, I will say this study session is adjourned and we will all see you around town. Thanks, everyone.